I'd like to call to the Board, the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education, regular meeting on May 20, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. in Mount Pleasant High School. This meeting, the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education, is a meeting conducted in public, but is not a meeting of the public. There is time, public participation during the meeting as indicated in the meeting agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the Board. These items may include those discussed at previous meetings or presented to the Board in the discussion this evening. At this point, please turn off the silence with some applause and stand up.
President, this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever since it was created.
At this time, we're going to read our indigenous letter of announcement statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the nation and people whose traditional land we are gathered and rooted in. To recognize the nation and people and their ancestral land is our expression of a great human appreciation and a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land, has been studying the Lord, and whose land, which is the nature of what we want to do and try and have resided and who has continued to reside on this subject. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. I'm also going to read tonight the headers of our educational governance units. If you want the full version, it's on our table at the door. As Board members, we are committed to the following: professionalism, respect and equity, inclusive collaboration, responsibility to afford looking vision, dedication to community engagement, and a commitment to continuous growth. We're going to do our roll call. Katie, are you here? We can go here.
Ethan Thompson here.
Amy Balm here.
Tim Mottiger here.
Alyssa is delayed. She had some traffic on her way up from Lansing, and so she apologizes. She's going to show up at about 6:50. Our first item is to approve our unit. Is the motion to approve the unit?
So moved, second.
On paper?
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you, everybody. And that moves us by super tennis.
Good evening. Tonight, as a first part of my report, we'll start with the PSC update. So I'll turn it over to Wendy and Brooke.
Yes, I think first tonight, we're going to welcome Wendy and Brooke to present some updates to the secondary math curriculum. And then we'll have Wendy follow up, Wendy Hoyle, that is. I'm sorry, Katie Hoyle, if I'm looking right at her. I'll follow up with the end of your report for PSC.
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Brooke Dade, and I am the middle school math department coordinator. I'm here with Wendy out of the high school math department coordinator to give you a final summary of our work with secondary math task force. From our extensive curriculum review and collaborative work across all grades 6 through 12, an organized structure of common course documents has been created. Teachers have reviewed research-based articles and have all provided back in the committee room. Instructional resources have been inventoried, and a few needs were addressed by Board of Education Action in December. A new middle school exploratory course has been created and more approved. The high school personal finance course has been aligned with Michigan Merritt's Curriculum Financial Literacy require early snow to date, and the new PSC implementation that document has been piloted in conversation. The next four slides provide a snapshot of our curriculum review and organizational coursework. Our team built a vested folder structure in the district home Google Drive that provides all teachers with a course syllabus, a pacing guide, common assessments, and all common resources for each math course across all grades 6 through 12. All task force members contributed to the development and organization of these course documents and resources, and we are proud of how far they have come at this time. We believe they provide Mount Pleasant Public Schools with a very solid framework for secondary mathematics that will elevate our work and help to provide consistency far beyond our own areas in the district.
So the MPHS personal finance course was identified as a course that will meet the Michigan Merritt's Curriculum Financial Literacy graduation requirement. That is a requirement that will apply to the class of 2028 and classes beyond. We align the course to the information that's available now, but we do anticipate that there will be updates from this date as that time gets closer. The Mount Pleasant Middle School introductory to personal finance course, the instructional resources and the course documents are ready to go. We'll collaborate as a department to support the implementation at this time. In December, we shares supplemental instructional resources and address our resource needs at that time. We have no additional needs to share with you today. We know that curriculum work is never finished, so from here, we will get this as a continuous improvement out. In addition to monitoring the guidance from this date about financial literacy requirements, we're going to support all of our courses by beating the district goal of getting a pacing guide document published on our website and discussing vertical scaffolding and topics as questions arrive, and then collaborating and discussing instructional strategies. This time, we welcome any questions that you have, Brooke.
I have some questions, and it's not quite, I mean, yesterday, what you presented, not quite. I was trying to understand, mostly in the high school, whether we had any, what people might call tracking for math. And so how someone may get pacing in a track? And trying to understand the difference between our honors track in math and our non-honors track, and how that path would work.
Well, in terms of vocabulary, tracking comes with it the expectation that once you are on that path, there is no adjustment. Like, this is your path from this point forward, and that is not what we have. What we have at each step of the required coursework is the opportunity for embedded enrichment or enhanced pacing for those students who seek the challenge or who have been encouraged to and accept it, the challenges placed before them. One of the things that I'm really proud of for our Mount Pleasant High School math teachers is that in the winter trimester, we have conversations with our students very subtly, very privately, but we have those conversations about, this is the class that you're in right now, and notice some things. How can we support you more, or how can we challenge you more? Have you thought about taking the honors section of this in this class? And so that's why I would encourage you not to utilize the term tracking, because we are constantly monitoring and adjusting where we would like to help students find success or maybe are struggling to do so, or help students to push themselves to embrace more.
That makes a lot of sense, and that does explain my questions. The community members asked me, and the way we use tracking wasn't quite defined, and I said, well, I guess we do, but you're right, we don't if they have a few students. And so that actually, and it's a lot of sense, thank you for explaining this. You're welcome. But I actually, yeah.
Just for a fuck down a little bit. So is it also fair to say that for students that want more challenge, that's open to them, doesn't have to be teacher-led, right? It could be student-led?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that is often the case, that we have students who, they know themselves, and they know their strengths, their weaknesses, and also their time constraints. We have a seriously high-class problem that we offer so many options and opportunities to our students in academics and extracurriculars. And there are students who will say, you know what? I'm challenging myself in my extracurricular area. And so for a particular course, I think that I need to scale back on the challenge. And then next year, I want to, or next year, I want to. And we do our very best to be a customer service schedule model. And for the many things that we offer and the many requirements that students have and the opportunities that they have, I'm pretty proud of the options that we are able to provide them.
So much, thank you. Second question, it was up there. Can you talk a little bit about the Michigan College research that you're leveraging?
Michigan Merritt's Curriculum? It's the acronym for our, yeah, it's a day standard.
Sorry, I.
All good.
That didn't mention college.
No, MNC, Michigan College, when they had the extra M, we never had problems. But I appreciate the question. Thank you.
I just wondered, is the process similar if there was a student in, like, one of the honors math that was really struggling? Would it be a similar process of private conversation? And maybe considering for that next trimester?
Considering for the next trimester, but sometimes, depending on the severity of the struggle, sometimes we don't wait until the next trimester. So I personally had experiences with students who started out and were doing well, and through maybe even just three, four, five weeks of a trimester, they find out that, man, they just feel like they're overwhelmed and over their head. And so, yes, private conversations with those situations, it is even more important that we reach out and through the parents in those conversations, because we know that when we can see the struggle in the classroom, parents are most likely to see something different. But also the struggle at home, and our best way to support students is to collaborate with that. And our counseling department is fantastic at facilitating when necessary. It's never great to have a schedule change after dropping out, but in order to help a student maintain success, it is the practice that we have as students.
Thank you, very good, Wendy.
Katie, for your fourth part. Good evening. I am Katie Hoyle. I am PSC teacher chair. So what I'm going to do is at that time of year, we like to give our annual update, letting you know what our community has been working on for the 23, 24 school years. The first two slides are a little repetitive, but I do know that with some of the changes in our board, I thought it might be good to review some of the basic information about what PSC is. You'll see our members there are listed. We have on the left-hand side, some of our more teacher members, and then on the right-hand side, we have the administrative side of our PSC committee. And it is made up of both, so we have that balance of both admin and teachers. Professional Studies Committee, we have representatives from both MPPA and the administrative team. What we do is we, as PSC, have the committee identify the liaisons, co-chairs. We're responsible for writing the task force charges that then go out to the task force teams. Co-chairs identify task force membership to meet the category guidelines. So we like to have a balance on those teams too, of general education teachers, special education teachers, family representatives when possible. The task force work completes, or task force completes their work, provides PSC updates and final reports. Once they have gone through us, then it comes before you as the board. The task force members will come forth and present their results of their work. And then PSC will make a recommendation to you based on what the task force has presented. The district-wide curriculum provides a framework for what all students are expected to know, do, and be able to perform. It is also vital that curriculum is aligned across grade levels, and then it addresses the requirements identified through both Michigan and national standards for teaching and learning. How does PSC support the Board of Education? As a curriculum advisory committee for the district, PSC is responsible for collaboratively developing a aligned curriculum, including outcomes, best practice delivery, and assessments. We also evaluate current and proposed programs. We assess the need for recommended changes and the impact that that change would have on other areas in the district. We facilitate a process to generate staff development. We coordinate curriculum with all of the district in building initiatives, and we investigate innovative improvement practices and continue to keep current learning theory. So there are many ways that staff and community members participate in Mount Pleasant Public Schools curriculum process. These include serving as a task force or a study team member, being a member of a building school or a team, leading or participating in grade level or department meetings where curriculum discussions help improve teaching, using best research-based practice for instructing students, basing instructional decisions on student data, serving on PSC, sharing ideas for PSC consideration, and supporting curriculum work as members of the Board of Education. And we do want to take the time to thank everybody who has impacted PSC this year and the role that we serve on those committees. We couldn't do it without the many teachers and the many co-chairs that are leading these task force tasks and projects. At this point, I'm going to move into kind of the high-level areas that we have focused on this year for the 23, 24 school year. World Languages, they have completed their task force work. We came to the board in November to share their findings. They did adopt their new curriculum for both the Spanish and French courses. ASL has been added to the course offering guide. This is something that I know has had a lot of excitement and a lot of interest, and there is a high student interest in this. The next step is the staffing part of this. With the staffing piece, also comes a need to update the pacing guides, because ASL is an unique topic in the fact that not every teacher can make a pacing guide for American Sign Language. It has to be somebody who knows the language, who knows the curriculum, and that usually takes that person who's specialized in that area. So once the staffing part is in place, then the pacing guides can be finalized with the guidance of the person who is the expert in that area. But we're excited that it's something that we're moving forward with, and we look forward to being able to have that person in place. Secondary Math was presented, so this is a little bit redundant, but they did complete their task force work. They had presented initially to the board in November. Used the board-approved and new Mount Pleasant Middle School into a personal finance course. The board also approved the personal finance course as that option to meet the Michigan Merritt's Curriculum Graduation Requirement. And extended access to online resources for Mount Pleasant High School and MNC courses. They have spent a ton of time updating common course documents, and I do want to give that in particular shout-out, because they've really worked to make sure that everything for their department is streamlined. And I know that's been something that we've been working at with PSC for several years now. And I feel like secondary math has done a wonderful job of making sure that the documents are easily accessible to all teachers coming into that department. There's that uniformity within them, so somebody could go to the documents, and it would be easier for them to follow and understand, no matter what class or course, they could talk prior. So they've really done an awesome job of trying to streamline and make sure that we have some consistency in terms of curriculum documents. Elementary ELA has been incredibly busy this year. Much like we have with our math task force and that we have reached out to the RESD and asked for their guidance, this thing was done for elementary ELA. They collaborated with Amy Salagar from GIR RESD to discuss possible curriculums. Task force members, upon kind of guidance from Amy, decided to pilot the Bookworms curriculum. They provided feedback to the task force. Ultimately, Bookworms was adopted because of that feedback and meetings and discussions and voting on that as a possible curriculum. That, I feel a task force had come before you guys earlier this year, asking for the approval to go ahead and order and purchase the materials. They are now starting to come into our buildings, and we're being overwhelmed, and we're to put all of it. But a lot of books are coming in, student workbooks are coming in, and teacher manuals. So that is teachers were able to walk away at the end of the year, have what we need to prepare for the rollout next fall. Task force members have visited Alma to see Bookworms in action. As a neighboring school, they are in year two of the Bookworms program. And so our task force members were able to go in, see how they're using it, and kind of see what those next steps will be. So our piloting teachers have had a little preview of what's to come in stage two. The pacing guide and assessment plans are currently in progress and very close to being done. Teachers have been given their new manuals in just this week. Student materials have started to trickle in. K-5 teachers attended a half-day overview training. And then over the course of the summer, there's an asynchronous training that would take place, is an online training for eight hours. And so teachers have signed up for that, and will be taking that end of the year this summer to have that extra training for the program. With the ELA piece comes Maggie Binder's role. So Maggie Binder has been transitioned into our ELA instructional coach. So she has worked heavily with the ELA task force. She's led the K-5 book study, How to Create Differentiated Reading Instruction. For those who've been on the board for a while and have kind of followed what's happening, we have had what's called our intervention times. Every elementary building has had a 30-minute time set aside for reading on math. That has been used to group students based on data, look at their needs, and then try to give them something in that 30 minutes that best fits their needs. With Bookworms, what will happen, instead of having that intervention time where we're training students, this book that we've been reading teaches us how to run those intervention groups within our own classroom. So that DI block is part of the Bookworms program. But the book study that was led has helped prepare us for what that's going to look like, for the assessment that we'll use with that, for the materials that we'll use to deliver that differentiated instruction. And Maggie was a huge part of leading that at staff meetings. She also attended great little PLC meetings and has been following up with us all year. I imagine her role, and that was probably going to continue very much the same next year, as we'll really be rolling that out. She'll be in there at our PLCs checking in and seeing what's working and seeing what we need to help with. She also was responsible for leading that half-day Bookworms overview training for the K-5 teachers. We do still have a couple of cycle areas still in progress. So secondary science task force, their task force charge was issued in January. So their work has begun on identifying current resources, reviewing class data, and posting class syllabus and course descriptions. They have continued work that will carry over into the fall, and it's going to be working on those pacing guides and common assessments, adding any necessary courses. And then the middle school in particular is looking at curriculum materials. And so that process has started, but that's all going to carry over into the fall of '24. A couple of areas that we wanted to pick out, it's quite a surprise. We are continuing to work on that continuity and fidelity piece within PSC. So we have spent time updating the task force charge. Since I've been on PSC, we have basically used the same task force charge as a template, and then tweaked it to fit the specific departments or the specific subjects. Well, what we've tried to do is we've tried to be a little bit more detailed and clear. We kind of want that task force charge to be a one-stop shop. So when that task force has given their charge, it will not only have very clear and specific expectations for the kickoff of the task force, but also including what's going to happen after year one in the task force. Or if you need a template for the pacing guides, it's linked in the task force charge. If you need the spot to record the data when you're in the very beginning process and we're using data to derive our decisions, where do we record that data? We're trying to link as much as we can into there, so it's so much easier for our task force to get that charge, have what they need, and be able to provide PSC with very clear documents. On your own, you can take a peek at the previous charge versus the new task force charge that you've been working on. Another area that has kind of come up this year, and board members may already have heard of this, secondary mentioned this, Brooke and Wendy, when they were doing their presentations about implementation guides. So the idea behind an implementation guide is that it spells out more specifically what teachers should and shouldn't be doing when teaching that subject or that content. So you can see there are two templates, there's an elementary template and a secondary. The reason behind the two different templates is because there are just certain things that are more applicable to secondary when it comes to weights of grades and late work accepting. And elementary has its own kind of unique specifications of things for their level. Right now, elementary math has dove into the implementation guide. That's what they've been working heavily on. It's near completion. I didn't want to share it ahead of time until we had it finalized. But it does specify, how often are you doing this part of the curriculum? How often are you using the online resources? What online resources are you using? Trying to make sure that students who are in one elementary building are receiving the same instruction as students in another elementary building, or students in a secondary level, that student in one course is receiving the same instruction as one in another course. So that's been something that we've been working on pretty heavily for the last couple of months, trying to get those off the ground. The idea will be that as each new task force rolls out, the implementation guide will be a peaser component of their task force work. So ELA, elementary, will be the next one that's rolling out their implementation guide. And so for our brand-new teachers coming in, it's not just going to be, here's your curriculum, here's your pacing guide. It's going to be, here's your curriculum, here's your pacing guide, and these are the expectations of how people deliver that curriculum. And then the last thing that I have in here is we did update the curriculum, the cycle review calendar. We've extended it out to 2027. One little thing that we needed to do is that the math, we have made known as PSC, that due to the availability of Ester funds, we actually rolled out the elementary math task force work a year early. Because with the deadlines of when we needed to have our curriculum ordered in order to be able to paper and use Esters, we did have a time crunch that we needed to get that done. So what happened to our secondary math team is instead of having a five-year cycle this time around, they are going to have a four-year cycle. We have opted to keep it that way, because if we altered when a math was starting even the next year, we would have a situation where we have two major departments and the same cycle we're doing here. And not only would that be more costly if we are looking at new curriculum material, it's also more challenging, especially in the elementary setting, when you have teachers who are having to learn two graded curriculums in the same year. So secondary math is going to be running a four-year cycle this time around so that we can realign and get back onto the five-year cycle again. The link is also down at the bottom, so if you can check that out, but it's the same, the same thing that you'll see on your screen there.
I just want to see things for all the creative work and hoping to lay out for us that we can access that. I would appreciate it.
Hi. Question about the ASL instructor. Is that going to be a personal logistician, ASL instructor within the district, or anything about partnering with?
Most likely what that person's going to do, we've kind of got this around a little bit, is that the likelihood of hiring just somebody to be ASL would not fill their active time to be considered a full-time teacher. So it could be a case where you can have somebody who is ELA certified and also is certified in ASL. So they might be keeping up other courses in a different subject and then still teaching the ASL course in order to get that full time. It's much more marketable that way than it would be to try and hire someone specifically for an ASL course.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a question. So I'm looking at the draft of the implementation guide, and I'm wondering if this would fit under one of these other areas here, perhaps like supplemental resources, or maybe it's an optional content specifically. But I'm wondering if there's been discussion, or if it is appropriate even, to put in something that discusses if a Seattle social emotional learning can occur during this lesson? And then also, you know, how can I make this culturally relative? Kind of add in a couple of components that can be built in so that that way it's kind of, you know, on our radar and kind of a block on proposing instruction?
We can definitely talk about this, yes, you can have to. And we've supported that.
And we've, and we've, to point that, I was kind of looking for, I know that we've talked a lot about kind of cultural awareness over the last few years and embedding this systematically rather than based on people's strengths from their coming to our district. And so I think adding this so that we can start to build over the years, because I know we do it very well in some areas.
Right.
And I think it is a component of the pacing guide we already call. And so that part is there, so just embedding it to practice as much as we can.
And that's what I was going to say, that on the pacing guides, that piece, the cultural awareness piece, is now included in every pacing guide that might be developed. So it is there, it's just not in the implementation guide. But again, P S C committee, we can talk about that.
Can you just remind us too, on P S C, are there, I know you said community members and like grandparents involved in that? At what point are they just as a refresher?
So we, last year or before, had created a forum for community members to express an interest in being on a committee. And to date, we haven't had anybody express that interest. So I don't know if that's something that, as a district, we set out another way to families just to make them aware of it, but it does exist. It's just we haven't had any interest expressed yet.
And if they were interested, what that potentially would have been, what meeting would have been? What aspect of P S C might that mean?
Uh, that's kind of, sure, yeah, because it hasn't occurred. Not to make it the Secondary Math show, but. So in the task force part of the process, we reached out to parents and community members who we know have had questions about what was on the website or what was happening within a class or I contacted a former parent, a student, former student's parent, who had questions about how the syllabus in this course didn't look the same as the syllabus in this other course. And so the rule that all the community members played there was to review what would be the public document. Now, if you saw this syllabus for the class, what questions would you have? Now, here's a syllabus for a completely different Secondary Math course. Does this, is it user-friendly? Are the pieces that you would find to be this thing? Or what is extra helpful? Is the arrangement organized in a manner that makes sense to you? Do you still have questions? What would you feel if your child saw this? Would you like to see this posted in a classroom, sent to you as an email, or do you need a physical paper copy of it? And then their feedback was then a part of what the teacher group looked at. So they attended, each one attended two meetings in order to understand what was being asked of them, and then they were given access to resources. And then it was a follow-up meeting to share all of their feedback. And then we took that to the work that we did. So we tried to be super respectful of the motivation that they had bringing questions forward, but also of their time that, I mean, some people love to have more meetings in their schedule. I don't know which people are, but we wanted to make sure that their voices.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for the work. I think this is such, it's something we don't talk about maybe as much as we should, I feel. It's such a part of the pride of our district. I know every time I go to our Michigan School Board Association meetings and I kind of drop over to P S C or our professional study committee, I have other board members look at me, say, what is that, or teachers, right? And wishing they had something similar. And when I, you know, even seeing the schedule, the thoughtfulness of the year, the five-year cycle, so that we don't have all the curriculum at once. And I just, I don't know, I just love the thoughtfulness and the panic that goes into this very much. And please share that with the rest of the group.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
My excited one to write report is to move into our policy review. Just need a moment to open that. And tonight, we're looking at the 5300 section of the policy. Okay, great. So we'll start with policy 5301, which is compulsory attendance, absenteeism, and truancy.
We have a few comments in there.
Okay.
The first one was mine, I was, especially if you start this section that is very, was all about student attendance record keeping. If we could have a couple of sentences at the beginning that we've had in other sections, that basically says the message of we care about every child's success in our district. It doesn't have to be super fancy. Someone put a suggestion, I don't know who that was, someone put a thing to an example, if that can help.
And would you really move on better than to start up 5301 specifically?
I don't, if we could put under 5300 before that's fine, maybe. That's actually where I put my comments initially, but then I thought, maybe that's awkward. And so whatever the lawyers make is best, I have no strong preference. I just like the message that sounds to someone.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Are there other questions about 5301?
There is. I'll read this second comment. It's from Jessica Alachino. It's both Jessica and Tim.
So my question is regarding 5301A. The language says, "Every person residing in the district who has a legal or actual charge or control of a child who is a mandatory attendance age must ensure that the child regularly attends public or private school or is receiving homeschool education unless the child is satisfied district graduate, has satisfied district graduation requirements that have been met." My recommendation is to make this a little bit more district, Mont Pleasant Public Schools-focused and say, "Charge or control of a child who has a mandatory attendance age, ensure that the child regularly attends Mont Pleasant Public Schools." And then move that component as one of the exceptions. So the private, private school or homeschooling as one of the exceptions not to be attending Mont Pleasant Public Schools. When I first read this, I was like, in my mind, I'm thinking, is it Mont Pleasant Public Schools' responsibility to make every child is in one of those formats? Or is it our responsibility to make sure everyone comes here and then you get accepted and held? So I recommend changing that language to reflect attends Mont Pleasant Public Schools, and then under exceptions, which is in C, add private school or receiving a homeschool education, which are two exceptions that we have here.
That makes perfect sense, Tim. That's a good question.
Tim, I think when you explained it that way, is it our responsibility? I could get behind that, but I think where I was struggling with having it as an exception is by law, you know, it's quoting the law that it's this, this, and this. So I just didn't know if it would get us into trouble to word it a way like, hey, you have to go here, even though the law is going to be different, even though it's not exactly what we're finding.
Kind of the law is you have to go there unless.
Right, so the way.
Unless homeschooling is everything about legal and private school. We have other public schools in the space, right? I didn't want it to blow up when people read that that it's our job to manage all of that and all of those placements and to verify. And I thought, but please, for the sake of, you require to attend Mont Pleasant Public Schools. If, again, there's other rules like location and other things within the policy that helps narrow this down a little more. Unless you have chosen as a family to go to one of these alternative routes, which then is an exception, so then we don't.
Right. Would there be a way to maybe, I don't know if you can put asterisks in this or not, but almost like see that with the asterisk, so that it invokes them to the exception? If someone just read that.
The last part of the sentence says, "requirement is otherwise exempted from Michigan compulsory attendance requirements." So unless, as described in C.
Yeah, maybe just something like that.
Interesting to see how the lawyers react to this, because it, we might not be able to touch.
I mean, it is, it is safe law, yeah, this is pretty much her medium. But let's, yeah, let's, let's see, and I like the idea of referencing down to C to the exceptions. And exceptions could be a student that is enrolled in another public or private school or receiving homeschool or a parent regarding for the 16-year-old or something like that.
But it's true that when I first read it, I stopped. I didn't quite get as far as you did, Tim, but it was really bohemian. I couldn't quite space why, and I think that's why, because it makes it sound like we should keep track of where people send their children, like it just, yeah.
We do have an application to homeschool students that reside in our district. So there is, there is a small piece of that. But especially with school of choice and charter schools and it's just, again, I think probably another example where the language is a little outdated and there's far more options than there used to be. But I think I can rework A and C to reflect that, and then we can see what's really exciting.
Even putting A and C together, right, getting, putting the exception straight in there so that they don't have to go through another section?
There's a bit of grace we could achieve that, but that's the conceptual.
Yes, yeah.
There is one more comment for section E, but Tim.
A second, we need to have our.
That's fine.
Regarding the 10% attendance.
Yeah, so don't we have a possibility of any requirements that are wrapped into a process that you got that they have a lot of.
We do, we do. So what we're finding in practice is that the Isabella County truancy policy that was written several years ago by a prosecutor that's no longer in our county, given the current situation of our legal system, we struggle with having the current policy of Isabella County employees. And so our administrators actually worked really hard this year with, with the, our Grisham Isabella R S D truancy officer to really sort of follow that policy, meet with parents, escalate cases that, you know, where the students weren't meeting the requirements. And we did not have much backing or much success from the prosecutor's office. And I don't, I don't want anyone to think I'm being critical of them. I definitely am not, but I think the long and short of it is they have much more pressing issues, you know, to address. And so at the time that they really took a strong stance on truancy was just very, very different time in our community and in our society as a whole. So the 10% reflects more of what we are, we're really able maybe to do and what is more manageable for our administrators. So coincidentally, Tru had 10% in their policy while we were still following the previous policy. And so I think we'd like to merge the two together with our processes this year so that we're still referring students to the court system. But like I can give you an example of a family that struggled with attendance, well, really, you know, of course, from the start of the year. They were referred to the prosecutor's office back in November and just had a court date just like two weeks ago. So it's really, there are just more pressing issues for them to handle over truancy. But you are right that Isabella County does have a truancy policy. So, and I don't know with an anticipated change in our prosecutor's office, you know, coming up with this election, I'm not sure what that will look like either with that, so. But they were, Larry, I know that the R S D is also considering hiring a second person that would address truancy. Right now, they have one person to cover all nine districts for Grisham Isabella. And she does spend a large majority of her time at Mont Pleasant, which we really benefit from that. But certainly, they could probably put three to four people to work in that space.
So I agree, efficiency and effectiveness, that is what's there. You need to just quickly solve the first thing.
Right, and I, I think it's really important to have a policy that is manageable also. If we put something in place that is so, you know, it's too taxing on our administrators, it's not realistic for our legal system that it just is, you know, words out of the way, and it doesn't mean anything, and there aren't any truancy. So I'd like to see something that we could all get behind and we know can actually make a difference for students. We have seen over the years, students whose families have gotten involved with the court system as a result of truancy, and it's made a difference with their attendance, with their achievement, those kinds of things, and we know it does work. But it just, you know, on what level do we have to get to before they're able to implement that? I think that's a really question.
Can you clarify for me, so by Michigan law, what is the, because it sounds like, is it, what is that?
Yeah, so I think that Michigan law is what's reflected here in our policy, to a certain extent. What Tim is referring to is a truancy policy that I heard say the county prosecutor's office rolled maybe in like 15 or 16? It was, I think it was, it was quite some time ago that had a higher level of requirements than 10%.
By law, it's.
What's that?
By law, it's.
I, I, I believe that too, truly, is that we believe that. So, so there, they really took a strong stance on truancy and they sort of made a splash statewide, you know, saying that we were going to do this and we're going to be more aggressive. And that did work for a couple of years, and then as other needs became larger, it sort of trickled out, so. But yeah, I believe 10% is what's reflected by this. Okay, is there anything else in 5301?
No.
So we'll move on then to 5302, enrollment in kindergarten.
Sorry, I have another question here.
Okay, yeah.
So this regarding enrollment to kindergarten, I didn't know if we needed to have junior kindergarten broken out in some way, or is that should be separate, since we are growing in that space? And I didn't see it really addressed in this.
So, and, and we certainly could. I would say that we don't because we follow the same age requirement for our junior kindergarten as we do for regular kindergarten. So if we were to do something different, you know, your districts that do a kinder prep program? And that would be something where they are, they are not meeting the age requirements and therefore they're also not getting full funding for those students. So all of our junior kindergarten students still meet this age requirement. Or they're likely, they are chronologically younger and they may be as soon as the fall birthday where they're doing kind of that waiver to meet between that September to December window. But they're still meeting this requirement, and they're turning five, and then the year they go into kindergarten, they're turning six. So there, there is some talk in the legislature right now that could potentially change this policy that would make this a mandatory for attendance.
Is your view that mentioning junior kindergarten ages taken just that too confusing? Or, I think with the law, which is like it will definitely happen.
I could certainly ask, I, I don't know. I mean, I could, like, when we look at M S D S, our junior kindergarten and kindergarten students are listed as the same, so it's really good. We differentiate them, we put that string. I don't know, Linda, have you talked to anyone in junior kindergarten?
Do you think that Joe has to work some magic when they're doing your kindergarten at some point with the C S R power school? But other than that, I don't, I don't think it needs to be differentiated.
I could ask if there, if there were any districts that might mention a developmental program. But so we keep in mind that not only are they legal to age requirements, they're still, they're covering the same curriculum. They're just covering it at a different pace and using more developmental appropriate.
Thank you, that helps clarify, but that's also part of the way I thought. Because a parent could have heard about that, thinking it's good, thinking then saying, well, how do I differentiate? There's nothing there.
That kind of goes into your comment, maybe, actually.
Yes, mine's not really about the policy, but just kind of spurred this thought. I know that sometimes deciding when to send your kid, especially with some of those tricky birthdays, sometimes just necessity from family, right, just working with parents, they might, you know. But do we provide, maybe, or do we point people, parents, to any resources to help them maybe make those decisions? But what are the pros and cons, you know, not just the academic readiness, but the social-emotional readiness? Why there's, I know there's no magic pill that we agonize over this ourselves, you know, with some of our kids' birthdays, but I just didn't know if there was a resource or.
So I would say typically, if families contact us with those questions, what we do is encourage them to attend a kindergarten kickoff session so that they can learn more about kindergarten, learn more about the structure. It also gives the opportunity for our staff to spend a little bit of time with their child. And then they can really have more of those in-depth conversations with our principals. They have a form that they complete that says I'm interested or I may be interested. And so then our three lower elementary principals contact those families directly. interested. And so then our three lower elementary principals contact those families directly, try to help them kind of walk through those impacts. But it is really unique and different for every family, just like you said. So we're there to facilitate and help them. But that would be the best guidance that we would give the families, is that if they're on the fence of trying to decide what to do, that they should attend kindergarten kickoff to get a little bit more information. We get more information, they get more information, then we can make a more informed decision. So. There's also flexibility if a student starts in junior kindergarten, and really should be kindergarten who move them up. We've also taken a student from kindergarten into junior kindergarten, so we can be flexible with that.
That's really helpful. I also just wondered, too, would it ever be helpful to have been like a middle school or high school teaching, even just to provide, even to talk to kindergarten teachers at some point? Because sometimes I think, you're thinking about it right now, but you might not think about, you know, what it's like to be old in high school, or young. And again, every kid is so different. But I think sometimes, you know, you can be nervous sending your kid anyway, and you can be mad, so I think that's great. Sure, come and check it out.
Yeah, they need to think about the, the long-term impact of that, right? Because it feels like a short decision, but it really does have a like long-term impact. So next is fifty-three oh three, student enrollment and withdrawal.
There were no questions.
Then we'll move on to fifty-three oh four, non-public school students, part-time attendance.
We have questions from both Katie and myself. For me, it's not really on the top. Let's see, I just wondered, when I read this, and I think we were going kind of the same direction I was, it states that a, let me find, these part-time attendance for non-core classes for our Actis. I wondered how many students do, and how, how big of a chunk of students is that, you know, this week? I had never really thought about this before.
Sure. So if you think about it in a very simple way, we provide instruction in elective courses at Sacred Mary Academy. We provide support at National Park Academy that falls under this policy. Those are non-public students that are counting as a portion of an FTE. So we provide art at Sacred Mary Academy. We provide art, music, physical education, computers, Spanish. So we have full-time teachers that are working at that school, and we're providing, through this, this allows us to be able to support them.
So is this a little bit?
Yep, it is bigger. I would say the small part of that is the homeschool section part. So we may have a family that homeschools their children, and they would like their child to participate in band or choir or art. That seems to be the most common practice. And so typically, it happens most often here at Mount Pleasant High School. And so we would work with families that the student could join one of those courses if they wanted to. That is not very common. It might happen, you know, we might have one or two students for a couple of years, and we want anyone for a while. So that's a much smaller number. But if you would think of that non-public school student, that's that shared time instruction piece, and we're pretty heavily invested in that.
So when I read this, I thought about the homeschool student going to the musical. So that's clear budget. So I thought that was a very tiny bit, and I didn't even, it didn't cross my mind that each instructional support provided to these other institutions fit under this.
This is really interesting. Thank you. So, um, okay, sorry. Okay, so just for clarifying, in both of the instances mentioned, those are just the elective classes, not core? That is what I do. Do you know the why behind that? So I, I, I don't know that I know the basis for the, the, the policy or the law that allows us to do that. But basically, anything that we offer to our students, we can offer to their students. So the fact that, for example, we used to only do computers at the elementary level in grades four, five, and six, in the sixth grade elementary. When we reorganized and kind of redistributed our buildings, we took computers all the way down to kindergarten to be able to offer that. So anything that we offer our students as far as elective courses go, we can offer to their students as well. But not now? Not for classes, not for classes. And, and my guess is that's how it's established in this law.
Right. And then are students enrolled as part-time students to access this, and then are we getting that funding?
They are, they are. So they show up, again, knowing, and Elaine has worked their magic with that, but they show up as a partial FTE. And so when we do our student count every year, there are pages of reports that show every student enlisted, and, you know, that they might be quick to, I don't know, point one seven FTE or something like that. So if you look at our student count, there's a private and non-public line that shows those students that we do receive FTE for that portion of their enrollment.
Is that the main benefit for us to do this?
Yes.
Trying to wrap my head up.
Yep, and open areas, we have, I mean, so that, so there's, there's a couple benefits to us handing them, right? So we're, we are able to receive FTE for the students in those courses. We are able to hire the teachers for those programs. So often, those programs are, you know, they're, they're hard to find, and lots of opportunities. So if I'm a music teacher, would I want to work for a public school that can pay more, and be a part of the secret delivery system, as opposed to a private school that might pay less? So we, we've looked at the budget over the years to say, okay, are we, does it benefit us financially? Does it not? And every year when we look at it, it does benefit our district financially, too.
And on top of provide the, you know?
Sure, sure. Provide the service, and be good community members, and all those kinds of things as well. But, but it's definitely, there's a financial benefit as well.
I'm just, sorry, I get lots of questions about this, so I want to be sure. What is the minimum and maximum amount of classes they can take and still be considered part-time? Is it, we could do one class up to just equally half? Does that make sense?
No, doesn't make sense. So because they're only doing elective courses that are offered, right? So, so you're talking about a student that would be enrolling here and taking an elective course?
And that, how would they do it, or is not?
At the secondary level, yes, that would be what they would do. Right.
And so they could do one class up to whatever would be half the class.
I mean, right, so, but, so if you, if you will get it, and they're spending, you know, better than half of their day here, then they're, they're becoming a full-time student. So that makes sense.
Right. And then, and the other thing just in parents, want to find more information about how they do this, where would be the best place to?
So the homeschool parents typically would contact the building. So again, it happens most frequently here, or maybe at Mount Pleasant High School, they would contact other buildings and offices.
And then the other non-public schools, same thing, would they reach out more to central office?
They would need a central office. I mean, we already have well-established relationships with the non-public schools in our community. So I don't know that we would be setting something up, you know, much outside of our district, but that would be, that would be a central office.
Just to, to turn you also to the conversation, Katie, in my role as a non-public administrator, there is a communication that comes from surrounding districts that ask, would you like these services provided for? And then you check which services you're opting into, and then that communication is sent back, or if you don't want to opt into any of them. For example, maybe, just for example, like in another city that's, you know, further away, that those services could be provided by something more local, there wouldn't be much sense in opting into that in a further away district. And so then that communication is sent, and that's kind of like a annual part of the process thing that the non-public also communicates with the district.
And that's, that's a share of our federal funds as well. So that's a share of Title one dollars, Title two dollars, all those kinds of things as well, where we're sharing all those services. And that reach is a little bit further, but we send out those letters that I'm just sleeping on annually to.
So wrapping my head around this, how does that, does that number text center classes as well, or is that completely separate except ours?
It's, it's completely separate because it's a consortium. And so that's a consortium with Grisham Isabelle R A S D. And so there's, that's the reimbursement that we're paying for that, or we're getting for that.
Your patients?
Yeah, of course, it's true.
But that's why we have policies.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So thank you. I, let me check this.
So we, if we look at that one, that I didn't really hear anything that we needed to send the clarification, we're okay with the policy, just.
Just that question.
Yeah, okay. So we'll move on to fifty-three oh five then, school of choice, that's a great one.
Um, there's a couple questions here. The first one is from both Jessica and I. At the very beginning, let me get a check here. It says, the board will annually determine whether the district will accept schools of choice, students who reside in the same I S D. Is that something new to us, or are we already doing this?
We do it every year. So we, we opt into school of choice programs within Grisham Isabelle R A S D. We also do school of choice programs that are called one oh five C, and those are programs that are in the contiguous, contiguous districts. So that basically would be Chip Hills, Claire, Coleman, so districts that touch Isabelle County, but are not part of our.
So you just don't remember?
We do it every year. Actually, we do it twice. School of Choice twice a year. We may have run it right, I think of it right now, and we do it again in November before the beginning of the second trimester.
Thank you. And I think, Tim, you had a comment on that?
Want me to read it? So my question is, kind of linking to what we had said about annually improving this, can we change that to be, we state that we are, but then if we decide not to be, that that would be a separate, instead of annually having to do that function? We've been a school of choice for decades, forty, sixty, forever. Instead of having it annually, can we say, we state that we are in this policy, unless there are legal requirements that you may have? Again, this is one of these, you know, time, things that change.
Yeah, sure. And that's, that's a great point.
I'll put this as a side comment. I just received a text that we are severe thunderstorm warning here. And so just to be prepared, know that there are issues. That's a question that I had.
Yeah, and I can, I can definitely ask that. I know that every year, we have to let the R A S D know. I mean, the Grisham Isabelle R A S D is sort of the overseer of the school of choice program. So we have to let them know what programs we're opting into. But you are right, we do it every year. And I think, you know, we've, we've talked occasionally in our office about, so Delaine Scott is a person that coordinates this program, and we've talked about, like, we've been a part of it for so long, if we ever wanted to not be a part of it, how would we ever do that? You know, it just doesn't seem like it would be possible. And I'm not saying that we don't want to do it. I think we do. But just, you know, what would that even look like if we changed that?
And the policy is flushed out. I can tell these decisions and points that I decided we're going to do annually, do that, like we decide that we are.
The other important point with, with this policy, even if we go back to the previous policy, is that know that all of our work on these is checked annually by our people accounting auditors. So they're making sure that we're meeting all the requirements, that we're following the timelines that are set, and all of that, and in a very kind, easy-to-work with way. But we know that we're following everything, because these are two programs that they definitely don't go up on every year.
Thank you for clarifying, almost.
So next is fifty-three oh six, foreign students.
That's another one I had a question for, now we change to the policy writing, but they make, the policy makes a difference between a student enrolled with an F one visa versus a J one visa. And for the F one visa, it states that in compliance with federal law, the student must reimburse the district the full unsubsidized per capita cost of providing education. I wonder, does that ever happen to us? Do you have F one visas? Is it once in the year?
It, it, and I am not an immigration expert, but I typically, it does not happen. And so most students come to us, are J one visa students, and that's definitely our preference. Those, those are the kinds of, you know, exchange organizations that we typically work with. So to the best of my knowledge, we've not had an F one visa student enroll. And if we would have a student that would watch, we would work through that process. But that isn't typically what presents to us.
That was my assumption, that I thought.
I know other school districts, you say, that do accept F one intentionally, and a whole program for that.
And I think our philosophy has always been to shy away from that, because we are not immigration experts, and it gets really tricky. And again, certainly, if we needed to, we had a family that was here, we would try to figure that out. But the, the large majority of our exchange students, our international students are F one, or J one visas, sorry.
Well, that, that makes sense, and I'm glad to get that too, that we don't have some.
It's good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Think that was it for this one?
Yes. Fifty-three oh seven, homeless students?
Yeah, no questions.
And I will just say on a side note, this year, Emily Shiner and Marcy Stout have been our key evento liaisons. They work really closely with Stephanie Binder, and they are just really doing that phenomenal job with that, with that program this year, really meeting the needs of our students. And as you all know, the student population just continues to increase. But they really have done a nice job of being creative with ways that we can or can support students, and then really ensuring they're supporting their families as we're supporting them. So I've been grateful for their work in this program. Fifty-three oh eight, protection of people rights.
There are some questions here, so Katie?
So Jessica, I had the same question here. It looks like, I'm just curious what kind of access that military recruiters typically have? Is that in the classroom, events, assemblies? And then are parents informed about these instances ahead of time? And more, my thinking is, of course, you know, military is a good thing, but parents, guardians, might have a conversation also about disclosing personal information, or having, you know, someone shut at the door, texts, or that kind of thing.
So military recruiters are entitled to directory information that we're, we're required to give for anyone. But we do not typically arrange high-end meetings. So the military recruiters in our buildings, they're here during lunch, often on the stage right behind us. So it's more of a public setting, a group setting, where they're, they're together with them. But the information they're, they would be entitled to would be the same information we would be entitled, or we would be required to release. Parents can opt out, so that we can not release their, you know, when we say directory information, name, address, and those basic kinds of things.
When I read the nice policy, I kind of saw that, oh, it's protected by law. And I just, yeah, just wondering if there was maybe something that goes out, whether that's been here, like, by law, this is a part, what we do.
There is a, uh, I, I can't see, and I guess for lack of, it just says that, you know, schools are, are required to release directory information. If you'd like to do this information excluded, please contact your school office, and that would be the same. You know, the other notice we send out at the start of every year is that families don't want their children, if they don't want their photographs appearing, or they would go on video, and that kind of thing. I would subject that in as well.
So a second comment from Jessica here. I'm going to read it aloud. She asked, is this maybe another instance where we want a preamble outlining how this follows here in our chapter of Michigan? So I'm thinking she needs a couple sentences at the beginning, stating again that we have, is this allowed to disempower it? But every chapter in here, maybe that's not what she needs.
Is that something that, I mean, I sort of feel like this whole policy is about protecting students, whether to, I'll feel like something should be added there? I mean, I certainly can.
I feel like, especially if we put the couple sentences at like fifty-three hundred, right, so the whole, then we can cover it all. And if that... And if I recall, and maybe I'm not remembering right, how it shows up on our website? But the section header shows up.
Correct.
And so maybe we can have it such a way that if we, not these little paragraphs, it stays showing, even if we go into specific policies, that could be one way we deal with it. I don't know if that's possible. Does anyone?
I don't, I don't think that it is, it would show up on every policy, but it would be there, like you could click on that in and of itself. But I don't think, I did play around with it to be for sure, but I don't think that they could automatically. It's like if you look at, I don't know.
To the reader.
I haven't seen it, I'll just play around, didn't see.
So me, as long as it's at the beginning, I'm okay with that.
Does that work for everyone else as well?
We could check the number.
Sure. Okay. Fifty-three oh nine, student records and directory information?
Yeah, no questions.
Okay. That's quite a, quite a lengthy policy, so, okay. Any policy questions in general?
I just want to reiterate, I mean, and I feel like even though we say that each time, for us to dig that deeper to our policies is awesome. I mean, even learning the differences between non-public education, all those little bits that I don't think about unless we read these, I just love that they're all this amazed and taking the time to have these conversations. So thank you for your patience.
Just a few more items on our agenda this evening. I did want to make sure that everyone is aware, I think you all know that we have an election coming up in November. We do have three seats that are open on our Board of Education. And in tonight's board packet, we did include the Board of Education, sort of the calendar year that we use. And I just wanted to make sure that you all understood what we have coming on our board. Our open on our board is we do have two positions that are each a six-year term, that we have a position that Amy is in and a position that Melissa is in. And then we do have one position that is only a two-year term. And that is the remaining position that Nathan is currently filling. So that's something that, you know, we want to make sure that we are staggering our board and staggering when positions become available. So it's a little, it looks a little different. So when our community goes to vote, there will be a section for six-year terms and then they'll say something like, vote for not more than two. And then there'll be a two-year term and then they'll say, you know, vote for one. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that, that that's where we are with our board process. And then just a nice thing I just wanted to remind everybody about also is our strategic plan work. You know that we are holding focus group sessions. We held our first staff focus group session this afternoon. We have one tomorrow afternoon and one on Wednesday afternoon. And then our community groups are next week. We do also have our electronic survey there. So if anyone is not able to attend one of the in-person or virtual focus groups, they can fill out the electronic survey. And I should clarify, the focus groups that are meeting next week for community members, one is virtual and one is in-person. One that's in-person is Wednesday, which I believe is the twenty ninth. And that is here in this building in the meeting center, starting at five thirty.
Jennifer, just as a reminder for those that are listening to this, where can they go to find the survey?
So the survey links, that's been shared on our website, it's been shared through building newsletters, it's been shared on social media. And then, and will be emailed out again to parents. It was emailed out to staff, but we'll make sure that it's emailed out to all parents as well.
Might that be something, I don't quite know how the, what term will call or what it's called. Is that something that might be able to go out, like, right, that's going to say, hey, in case you haven't filled out the survey yet, just as a singular item? Or first as a part of a larger group of information?
That's a good idea.
Continue to maybe on that, that call, if we could even describe in one sentence that the survey is by opening motions? As opposed to some of the surveys that we do without a district, our package surveys that are very specific? I can kind of feel this is, so I think if we could see that, it might, we might get a different one. Thank you, appreciate it.
Definitely. That's all I have for our agenda.
Next on our agenda, we have our requested financial report.
We have a thirty-year agenda this evening with us, students still recovering from.
Your surgery's still out.
It's pretty heavy, it's working.
Great, so I am representing here for the financial office. I'll be talking about the April month end report, so we can see how it goes with this year. You can see on our first slide, the general fund, it is five years, you can see comparison, five years of data, and you can see that we have revenue and expenditures at sixty-seven percent each. On the special services funds, our special services funds is a pinball as always, but you can see the ups and downs, and the revenue, and the expenses, for all of our specialty items or specialty service ones. And add to our treasury report, the general fund, so our general fund, we have stern balance of ten point eight million, our receipts of five point six million, a dispersment of five point five million, and that would give us a balance of ten point nine million. For our debt retirement fund, we have a beginning balance of six hundred and ninety thousand three hundred and fifty-one, with some change, I'm not really going to say the change, so it's all from that. We have receipts of five thousand two hundred and ninety-two, we didn't have any dispersments. So do you have an ending balance as of April thirtieth? Six hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty, six hundred, six hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. And for our last slide, we had a capital projects fund here. We have a beginning balance of eleven point two million dollars with interest income of forty seven thousand five hundred and forty dollars and dispersion of five hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars. And that puts our ending balance of, as of April thirtieth, ten point seven million dollars.
Next on our agenda, we have not received any correspondence since our last meeting, which moves us to our citizens' request to address the board on any agenda item or non-agenda item. We have not received any requests to address the board. And so that's just to our consent agenda. Our first item is the approval of the May thirteen special meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Pauline Kiefer?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. We have to approve the bills for this one. And I can try to pull it up, so I can actually see the original bills, but I'm trying to incorporate it somehow. But let's see. I need a motion to approve the bills for six million two hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety cents.
So moved.
Second.
Pauline Kiefer?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. On to new business, we have to approve our district credits.
So this evening you have in your board packet a resolution to approve the graduates for the class of 2024. And I'll read the resolution in just a minute, but I did want to give you just sort of a bite of the numbers. We're really excited in the next two and a half weeks or so to be celebrating the graduates from the class of 2024. This year we have two hundred and fifty-five students graduating from Mount Pleasant High School, thirty-five students graduating from the WAY program, and seventeen students graduating from Mount Pleasant Community Education. So total of three hundred and seven graduates this year. So we're really, really very excited to celebrate that met all the accomplishments. This resolution reads, whereas Mount Pleasant Public Schools Community Education, WAY program will recognize the graduation of the members of the class of 2024 on Thursday, May twenty-third, 2024. Whereas Mount Pleasant High School will recognize the graduation of members of the class of 2024 on Sunday, June second, 2024. Whereas the prospective list of graduates of the class of 2024 attached to this resolution has met the graduation requirements as set forth by the state of Michigan. Therefore, the result of the prospective list of graduates for the May and June 2024 is certified by the Mount Pleasant Public Schools is approved. I'm asking that you approve this resolution this evening of the board.
Katie Reed, yes?
Reed, yes?
Ethan Thompson, yes?
Amy Bond, yes?
Ms. Isaac, yes?
Jim Motecar, yes?
And it may be a little backwards, but we probably need a motion, second.
I'm so moved.
Second.
Sorry, that's on me, that's just a quickie.
You all did great, I'm hopeful, it was sounding awesome, it was really good.
Three hundred and seven, how much higher is it to, if I'm remembering?
You know, I, it is higher, it's higher. I want to say, and I don't have exact numbers in front of me, I want to say that last year Mount Pleasant High School was around two hundred and thirty, so that's larger. And I think WAY and Community Ed was just under fifty, so that's larger as well. So it's great, definitely. It's an exciting time.
Next on our agenda, we have to approve the field trip of the fundraiser.
And I, again, I want to apologize if this paperwork was not completed sooner. You have in your board packet this evening the overnight field trip paperwork for our future fifth-grade students to attend Camp Copinconan. They went last week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. They had a wonderful time, of course, they benefited from the nice weather that we've been enjoying prior to to them. And it was a great time. So due to an error on our part in these staff numbers, this did not come before you prior to their trip. And you can see more information there regarding their trip and their fundraising efforts and all those kinds of things. So we're asking that you approve that this evening. And just on a side note, if it sounds familiar, we did already have a presentation from our board of fifth-grade staff, they're going to Eagle Village and they go next week after the Memorial Day holiday.
Does they have a motion to accept the field trip?
Second.
Second.
Pauline Kiefer?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, that's been at least for this section, we have new hires.
Yes, good evening. We sadly would like the board to accept the resignation of Sierra Brown and Offy Johnson. Visations before new hires, sorry. Did we say her name?
We did, I guess so.
Oh. Sierra Brown and Offy Johnson. Do we have any motion to accept the resignation?
So moved.
Pauline Kiefer?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, we started to postpone. Now we have new hires, I was too excited about new hires.
Nice list of new hires, Jeremy Ballard-Gard for High School Special Education, Shelby Burr, High School English, Olivia Corr, Junior Kid American at Gander, Olivia Harris, Special Education for the District, Kayla Levy, English teacher from Mount Pleasant High School, Maddie Peishu, fourth-grade teacher, Pantry Elementary, Brittany Taylor, Special Education for the District, and Jenna Ruler, Science teacher at F P H S. And Kayla was here tonight, but she said she had to sneak out when she heard the storm was coming. So she stayed for a while and she's a Mount Pleasant grad from two thousand eighteen. Do we have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Pauline Kiefer?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. And it's awesome, this is such a big, there's so much special that teachers on there, they're going to be very good. Next on our agenda, it is a closed session, which I think is a roll call to do.
It is a roll call, it's for going into closed session to discuss Mount Pleasant Education Association negotiations.
Do we have the, no, I need.
Motion first.
Do we motion first? Yeah, so that's the part of this that's.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All right, now the show, Katie Reed, yes?
Katie Peck, yes?
Ethan Thompson, yes?
Amy Bond, yes?
Forty-five, yes?
Jim Motecar, yes?
Thank you, everybody.